Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 4th, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting. I hope everybody's doing well. We certainly had a wild ride these last few hours. And there are a lot of trees and branches down. I think South Street, I just heard, is closed for a little bit. And some of us, myself included, lost our electricity for a few hours, but at least ours is back on. I think most of the town's back on.
No cable and Wi-Fi in some areas.
Yeah, we lost cable and Wi-Fi here, too. But that's back up now, so.
Good. All right. Chris, why don't you lead us in the...
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Anybody here for citizens' input? Seeing none, no one? And there's no emails? Okay. We'll do the COVID-19 update, Bill.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, there's not a lot to report on the COVID-19 update, other than the fact that statewide, it appears to be an increase in cases that have actually caused the governor to express some concerns about how things are working right now. But generally, in Foxborough, we're still in good shape. We only have four active cases currently. Nobody's in the hospital. And we've actually done very, very well in that respect. So, a lot of the businesses, you know, have opened, even if at lowered amounts. So, we're actually faring pretty well, all things considered. From the...operationally, we're open. There are still a number of towns around us that are not open. Across the Commonwealth, they're not open. Not sure why, but they have different reasons. I mean, they have different staffing issues, but most of our folks are here. So, we do have situations where folks still do have childcare issues. We're trying to work through those things, but there we are. But those folks are still working remotely, and all our work is getting done. So, there's no issue that way. I did speak to Mike Johns the other day. I went to visit him on Thursday. And so, he's...I think he's more anxious to get back to work than he is anything at this point, because he's just so frustrated by not being able to do a lot. But he has helped me out from a few things. I've asked him for stuff. He's been able to get it to me. And he's still, you know, doing the best he can under the circumstances. But I'm obviously trying to limit his ability to do stuff, given the circumstances. But he's going back to the doctors again tomorrow. And apparently, what's happened, he's had to have surgery placed where they placed two plates in one arm and then one in the other. And one of them's going to be removed from the one that has two. So, it's a pretty significant surgery that he was involved with. So, clearly, he's on the mend, but he's going to be in capacity for a while. So, we'll continue to wish him the best. He sends his regards to everybody on the board and everybody in town. He's been communicating with folks on a pretty regular basis. But needless to say, I don't have a report for him. But Town Hall-wise, we're still open, and we're doing the best we can under the circumstances.
I know every time I come into Town Hall, there's a greeter there, and they always make sure that we've gone through the list and said no to everything and make sure we wear a mask. Some of them are some young volunteer kids that are...
That's right. Yeah, we want to say thank you to everybody who's been doing that. A lot of folks have been doing that completely on a volunteer basis, and we really greatly appreciate their help. It's certainly helped us out in able to keep that desk manned, and so we can keep people coming into the building in a safe and orderly way. But generally speaking, we haven't had a lot of traffic. I think folks are used to the concept of, you know, doing things remotely and on my phone and by internet, communicating that way. But so far, things have worked out pretty well.
Right.
Can I ask one question? I was going to maybe bring it up during Selectmen's update, but just as we have the COVID-19 updates, do you think it makes sense, in a way, not to create any work for anyone? Because I'm sure we have an eye on this. But like, maybe once a month, we just check in budget-wise, you know? Meals, hotels, taxation, permitting inspections, ambulance receipts, and then, you know, are there any big items that have come up on the budget that were unexpected because of COVID related? You know, just so that it's not the end of the year, just like a quick, you know, anecdotal check-in?
I was actually going to do that as part of my report tonight.
Yeah, because there's some good news.
Later on, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So, but I think, generally speaking, obviously, meals and hotel tax are going to be down. We don't have a report on that. We don't...we get that information quarterly, so we won't know that information for a little while. But the last report we got wasn't bad, because don't forget, that's a reflection of the quarter that just happened right before that. So, and that information's about three months old when we get it. So, the next report that we get will probably show and give us an indication that clearly the months of April, May, and June are way off. But we started to pick up businesses again back in June, so because businesses started to reopen in June. So, we might see a little bit of an uptick in that. But certainly, the hotel motel tax is going to be down and not where it was. But we expected that, and we anticipated that in the budget. I do have some good news report, but I'll hold it to my report.
Yeah, and then I'll... If I have any follow-up questions, we'll wait till then.
We can certainly get into that, okay?
We're running a little early, so we'll sort of...unless everybody from the Kraft Group is here. You waiting for anybody? You guys want to get home a little early?
Absolutely.
Come on up, then. Come on up. So, we have a presentation from the Kraft Group on Gillette Stadium's potential reopening with some fans. And those of us on the board got a sneak peek of that reopening plan last week. And now, we've got representatives from the Kraft Group here to make a presentation to us again and to the town. So, introduce yourselves, and we know who you are, but the people have...
Jesse, you know us, with Gillette Stadium. Thank you for having us this evening to go through this plan.
And Jim Nolan, Chief Operating Officer for Kraft Sports and Entertainment in Gillette. And thank you very much for the time tonight.
Sure.
Obviously, I could talk about this for hours.
Hours!
Hours.
We're going to keep it trimmed.
Know a lot more about it than you want to know about it, right?
We're going to keep it really neat and trimmed. So, yes, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. And as general background, the National Football League and Major League Soccer have said that we can host games with fans in a limited capacity if it's approved by state and local authorities. So, the purpose of this presentation is to show how we can operate safely, so that we can work with you while we work in parallel with the state to seek approval. So, tonight, I'm going to walk through why we believe it's safe and what it would look like to come to Gillette for a game this fall, because it is radically different than what we're used to. So, as a starting point, our Vice President of Security, Bill Christensen, has been working with Chief Grace and Chief Kelleher, so that to incorporate them into the plan, because they're part of our execution of it. And specifically, Chief Kelleher, along with Dr. Eric Rarling from the Brigham, are drafting our medical protocols. So, basically, what goes on in a first aid room, what goes wrong if we have a COVID case, how are we handling that? So, they're taking the lead for us, and we think that we'll have a really good plan from that regard. So, like I said, I could talk about this for hours, but what I wanted to do is say, what are our keys to success? And we think our keys to success is, one is we're an outdoor venue. It's a...there's a big difference between being outdoors and indoors. We are going to require face coverings for everyone at all times. The only time you can take your face covering off is when you're seated and actively eating or drinking. So, if you're not drinking or eating something, your mask is on regardless of where you are, from car when you arrive to car when you leave. We can maintain physical distancing through all facets of our operation. I'm going to talk about that. And in the seating sections, the way we're going to do is, we're going to have pods of seats, so a group of four, group of two, group of six. And that pod will be six feet away from another pod, so that people who've chosen to come together, we call them family units, can sit together, but they're going to be six feet in the stands away from every other patron. And what that does is that takes our capacity from 65,000 down to about 14,000. And as Ed O'Leary will attest to, we always have no-shows. So, we believe that our actual number in the building will be closer to 12,000 to 12,500 in a building that, at one point, held 71,000 football fans with our standing room only and 1.8 million square feet. So, we're really large, we're outdoors, and the max capacity we'd have is 14,000. And we've encouraged anyone who's...we're going to encourage anyone who's at risk not to come. And what we've done for every ticket holder, whether they're a suite holder, whether they're a club seat holder, or whether they're a general season ticket holder, if you don't want to come this year, you don't need to. We're not charging you. You can keep your seats for next year at no penalty, no questions asked, because we don't want anyone to feel any obligation to come. So, if someone doesn't want to come, there's no penalty. And we were the first team in the NFL to announce that, and many have followed. Many have followed our lead. The...we do have fans who want to return. So, there's a significant number of Patriot fans who want to come if we have games. And surprisingly, the Revolution, over 90% of their season ticket holders want to come if we have a game. And our model can accommodate all of our Revolution season ticket holders. Employees want to return. This year was one of our highest years of having our part-time employees come back. And they haven't come back, but what we do is, every year, we poll them and say, are you coming back or not? Because we always have turnover, because people move, people don't want to work, they've got other things going on. But this year was one of our highest years of employees wanting to come back. And then, we believe we can provide a safe environment. And I'm going to kind of walk through a fan journey, so you can understand the components of why we feel it's safe. The...our...we've engaged many experts to help us. We feel we're the best operators of any stadium in the NFL. But what we did is, we enlisted a team of experts, who are experts in their own particular areas, to help us with the COVID issue. We have the Head of Infectious Disease from the Brigham on our team. We have the National Foundation for Infectious Disease, Dr. William Shafter, who's all over the news, but he's an industry leader. And then, from the building side, we have our building planner, Populus, on board. We have a company called Movement Strategies, which Ed's seen before, but they model how fans actually move, so you can see your pinch points, so you can correct them. Cushman and Wakefield, they're expert in disinfection and cleaning. We have experts in thermal imaging. Lisa Berger, who many people are familiar with, our food safety consultant, who works with the Board of Health here, is on board. And we've engaged two companies on air quality, on air safety. One is called Synergy, Air Quality Safety. So, indoor spaces, how do we know that we're...the air that's coming out is...has been filtered properly in the right volume to keep people safe? And that's Synergy and Honeywell. Our overall approach is, we call it the Swiss cheese approach, because there's no one strategy which can protect people from getting COVID. But like Swiss cheese, if you layer slices of Swiss cheese on top of each other, what you do is, you begin to eliminate holes and gaps. So, our five strategies, which we've applied on every step of the fan journey, are distance. And I really talked about it. 20% capacity, we're expanding our perimeter. Our buildings...our building is set up for us. We're not TD Garden, we're not Fenway Park. We have oodles of space that don't impact public roads, where we can space people out getting to the gates and getting back to their cars. Protection is key. We talked about outdoors, masks, but we're putting up partitions. We're...we have strategies to, you know, simplifying the menus at concession stands for quicker turnover and everything in between, including air quality, to protect people. Disinfection, high-frequency cleaning, the right chemicals, we're all lined up to do that. Tons of hand sanitizing stations everywhere. And things like...and things that goes back to strategy and disinfection, combine some of them, but we're going to have a cleaning attendant in every bathroom throughout the game. So, they're going to be constantly wiping down high-touch surfaces. You know, vigilance. And vigilance is everything from having a wellness screening for people coming in to education plans for our fans, trainings for our employees. How do we do this, and how do we do it well? And then, lastly, communications. We have the ability to communicate to every person coming to the game. And we do it routinely. This isn't new. But we know every season ticket holder, anyone who sells their tickets on the secondary market, we get their contact information. We're going to directly email them. And then, between the power of the media, our social media, NFL and MLS amplifying the message, we're going to get the message out. And then, on game day, we marry that with the Route 1 message boards, signage in the parking lots, signage coming to the gates, gate announcements, in ball. We have an apparatus like no other to communicate, so we can operate safely. So, then, if we jump into the fan journey, and I'll stop here for one second. If at any point in time, anyone in your team collectively wants to spend time deep diving on any of these points, we stand ready to do that, both ourselves and our experts. Our experts stand beside us. They're a phone call away, so that we can fill concerns, gaps that you think we may have, so we can prove to you it's safe. But from a parking overview, as you folks know, we have 20...we have over 22,000 licensed spaces, where we can accommodate over 56,000 people. And we're talking about bringing 14 in. The...what we're going to do this year, stadium side of the Route 1, is going to be passes only. So, club members, suite holders, media, employees, all on this side. So, if you don't have a pass, you don't come on this side. You park on the other side. If you park on the other side, we went free parking this year, because we don't want to have the contact point. You know, we don't want to be collecting cash where we don't have to. So, we went free parking. We're foregoing that revenue. If someone does not want to tailgate, we're going to park them like we do at Stop &amp; Shop or Patriot Place, every space. And we call that, you know, we get "park and leave." You park your car, you go. If you want to tailgate, we're going to give every car three spaces. So, not two, three. And people are going to be asked to stay within who they came with. And between the local police, particularly from the stadium side, and the state police on the opposite side of Route 1, in conjunction with our security, we're going to manage it. And with so few people, it's not the vision that people typically see on a game day. So, three spaces, everyone's going to have space to be socially distant while they tailgate, and that's powerful.
Excuse me, Jim, just one question. So, in relation to that, you're saying that it is going to be parking across the street. Is it possible to keep all the cars on the Route 1 side?
We don't believe so.
You don't believe so, okay.
No. There's not enough spaces on this side. The...you know, but once you take out the...because you have to remember, we have to also have, which we do, parking for Patriot Place. You know, so we maintain the parking in front of, you know, Trader Joe's, Tabas Pro, the North Parking Lot, and a little bit of what's called Lot 3 for Patriot Place, because that's an ongoing business that we don't interrupt.
Right.
Once you take that out, and then, if you expand the club parking a little bit, even though we have less people, and we feel it's cleaner, because when you're coming up Route 1, you're going to see a sign. If you have a pass, stay to the left or the right, depending on what side you're coming with. If you don't have a pass, go across the street. So, it'll simplify people getting in the lots very quickly. And of course, ADA parking, we will have more than ample ADA parking in close proximity to the stadium. So, they will...the ADA parking, whether you have a pass or not, we consider an ADA plaque or a pass. But all ADA parking will be parked typically where we do, in very close proximity to the stadium. So, you know, one of the questions...you know, one of the questions that I would have is, well, how are you going to get people into the building? Okay? First of all, as people approach the building, we have over 2.7 miles of pedestrian routes that are marked, that go from the parking lots to our stadium. And with the layers of security we have out there, we're going to keep people at a cadence. And a good example of that is at the Route 1 crossing. Like, we're not going to let...we're going to socially distance people on that side until there's capacity on the other side. And then, we have a secondary perimeter where we're going to keep people spaced. But then, you get to the gates. And I call the gates, it is killing an ant with a sledgehammer, that because we have so much space and we have gates that can accommodate 65, we're going to open up a significant number of those, because we do not want any backup at the gates. You know, so typically, a game will have 90 gates. We're going to have over 50 gates for 14,000 people or 12,000 people. And at those gates, those gates can process, based on our history, 21,000 people an hour, what we're opening. And we're talking about putting through those gates, which is just the general population, we're putting 11. So, we have huge amount of capacity. And the way we're going to set up the gates is, is your wellness screening happens up front. And then, and with the gates, we're going to set up bike fans, so that there are six feet between each line of people going through the entry process. So, that's separated. And then, we're going to have markings on the ground to keep each group of people separated six feet from the other groups. So, you'll...and each group would be no more than four. So, if you came with six, you'd have four go first, two right behind it. And then, but you'd have your wellness screening first, then you'd come through, and you'd have go through the magnetometer check, the metal check. And then, the last check is the ticket check, which is the fastest. So, we're not going to have any backup, once you get to the magnetometer, getting your ticket scanned and getting into the gates. So, and if you're in queue, even with the six-foot socially distance, if we have the queue full, that queue will clear from the back to the front in five minutes. So, even from a CDC perspective, if they...even if they were within six-foot close contact, they're in six-foot close contact for less than 10 minutes. So, if you think about it, it's less than 10 minutes, they are six-foot distance, and they're wearing a mask. So, again, multiple layers of protection. We talked about the seating bowl, and the...kind of the details are in it. But we specifically set up the seating bowl. We talked about six-foot distance. But what we also did is, we only have two pods or two groups of tickets in one row. And we did that, because even though we could do three, we didn't want to have any patrons having to cross over other patrons to get to their seat. So, every pod will have access to an aisle. We've killed the first seat on every aisle, and then, in the aisles, our ushers are going to make sure that no one stops in the aisle. We do that anyways, but that would be an added measure. And when you think you're only at 20% capacity, it's far easier to manage than if you're at 100% capacity. And we believe people are going to want to comply. You know, because, you know, we don't want...then, our season ticket holders are not going to want to ruin...you know, forget COVID, they don't want to lose their tickets. And we're aggressive at policing. And if people screw up, we have a warning system, where you get a warning card. And if you get two warning cards, you get ejected. If you get ejected, you're dealing with our revocation committee. And with our waitlist, people don't want to lose their seats. So, we think that will help compliance.
Question?
Yes?
How are you going to box off the other seats that aren't being used?
Very good question. That's part of my 45-minute presentation.
Oh, then we'll skip it.
Okay. We're going to zip tie every seat.
Ah.
So, any seat that's not...because it's a great question, because we don't want people inviting other people to come sit with them, you know, buddies, come on down, there's a seat. We're going to zip tie every seat. So, it's physically going to take them out of play. So, if someone goes down, and they have four seats, they know these are the only four seats they can sit in.
And then, I read those zip-tied seats will be up, so it's easy to walk to their seats?
They'll be up, and it's easy to walk by. And kind of the other layer of it, we call it the manifest, which is the seats that are available. We're going to have the same manifest for the Revolution and the Patriots. So, we don't need to take zip ties down and zip ties up. You know, the same seats that are available for the Patriots are available for the Revolution. And then, there are other, we call seat kills, but for football, the first seven rows are going to be killed, the areas around the player tunnel, you know, outdoors at the Optum Lounge, there's a whole bunch of areas that we've killed to, A, so we don't have congregation, and B, we're not infringing on what's happening on the field.
So, Jim, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, is it going to be people come in, open seating then? They just...they have to find a block?
Nope.
Or you're going to be...people are going to be assigned, even though...
Yes.
Even though it's...I'm guessing, as season ticket holder, I defer this year. So, but I'm guessing you've got however many season ticket holders stayed on, so you guys will come up with some way, what game they go to or whatever.
Correct.
So, they'll be going to an assigned seat that's already...
100%. So, really good question. Thank you. What we did this year is, we got rid of the fancy tickets with the player pictures on them. So, every ticket is a mobile ticket. So, right now, no one has a ticket. No one physically has a ticket, no seat's been assigned. You know, with the approval of the town and the state, and we know we can move forward, we would then electronically slot people into seats. And because it's at 20% capacity, someone...if someone ordinarily sits in Section 101, a seat may not be available in 101 for them, so they need to be made to be in 104 or 143. So, we're going through the methodology right now on how we deliver...how we, you know, choose. And it's going to be...our goal is to get as...the season ticket holders who want to come to as many games as we can in a seat as close to their existing seat as they have. You know, so someone who sits in 109, you know, we're not going to put them in the top of 310.
Try to keep them in that...
Try to keep them close.
Their price range.
Price range.
Yeah.
And if someone goes down a price range, this is an easy way to think about it. We kind of look at it as, anyone who stays on and wants tickets, we've looked at it like we've credited their full amount to next year. And then, whatever tickets they end up getting will come off of that credit. You know, so if they go down a ticket price because they have to, or potentially, they choose to, if we give them some options, then that's the only amount they'll pay, the face value for the ticket they get. But yeah, unfortunately, this is where the...where it's just different.
Do you guys have a number now of people who have kept their seats? Or is it still...the deferring is still ongoing?
Ongoing.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, so we have a pretty good idea, and that's we're building the model off the pretty good idea.
Yeah.
And then, the next step for us is to start internally thinking about how we populated.
Yeah.
And then, once we have approval, is when we'll push out to our season ticket holders and say, this is the plan.
Yeah.
And even at that point, people will be able to opt in or opt out. It's not going to be mandatory.
Will this be season ticket holders only? So, say you can have 14,000, and you only have 10,000 season ticket holders that want to go to a game, would 4,000 be general public sales?
So, no. The...we believe...I'll answer it two ways. One, your question, that we want to know everyone who's in our building, okay? And as Ed would attest, the problems come from the people who aren't our season ticket holders more often than not. We believe we have enough season ticket holders who want tickets, and that we'll be able to fill it with season ticket holders. If we don't fill it with season ticket holders, we would use our waitlist holders, some of whom have been waiting around since 2003. But that's essentially our population.
Okay.
But when you get to...when you're talking about 11,000 seats, it...they go pretty quickly. It's not a big number when you typically have...
Now, you said what I wanted to hear. You want to know who's...
We want to know. And what's interesting is, even if our season ticket holders sell it on the secondary market, we get the name of the person who bought it. You know, so we know who they are, and we can communicate with them before the event and after the event. Then, if we jump on the concourse, what we're going to do is, we're going to set up what we call buffer zones and queuing zones to get to food and beverage and to bathrooms. And if you take a food and beverage location, first, we're going to have our points of sale six feet apart, so that someone who's ordering the food is six feet apart from the next person ordering food. And we're going to have queues to get people there. And similarly with the bathroom, we're going to have distance markers, and we're going to control the number of people who can get in the bathroom. But again, it's the sledgehammer and the ant concept. Our...we're going to open every bathroom in the building, which can accommodate 65,000 people. When you add 14, our math...our math is that every person on the 100 and 200 level could go to the bathroom 10 times in a game, in a three-hour game. Every person, that's how much capacity we have. And on the 300 level, every person could go to the bathroom seven times a game. And so, we feel we have so much capacity that we're not going to have, I wouldn't say any lines, but our lines are going to be short and socially distanced, and that will be just pregame and halftime, and possibly, we'll have no lines, because our throughput's huge. In the bathrooms, what we're doing, we're taking out every other urinal, and that's included in our count, because we don't want to have people at a urinal right next to someone next to someone else at a urinal, so we're taking everyone out. And for our sinks, we're adding partitions between our sinks, you know, cuz we don't want someone, you know, washing their hands directly next to, or splashing the person next to them. So, that's, that's bathrooms.
How about parking lot, that was, parking lot bathrooms?
Yeah, those, those would be porta-johns with porta-johns with the hand sanitizer in it.
So there, is, is anyone gonna come around and like sanitize them every half hour, or any plans for that?
Well, so, the, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't set a time yet, but we're gonna reduce the operating hours of our parking lots.
Okay.
We don't, we don't need to be open, you know, four hours, or in some cases, the police, the state police will make us open five hours because we're backing up in town or on Route 1. We're gonna reduce the hours so that the duration someone's in a parking lot is less. But that's a good point on the porta-johns, cuz originally, our plan was to go through all the porta-johns once they leave, so when people return to their cars. But that's probably a really good practice to go through and sanitize periodically throughout the inn. And also on parking, which is part of the egress, there's no tailgating post-game. It's, once the game's over, you're gone. So our clubs close at the end of the game, the suites close at the end of the game, you leave the stadium and you go home. Now, you can go to Patriot Place, but you can't go to your vehicle and tailgate. You can't stay in the club, you can't stay in the suite. You're coming for a game.
Jim, just a question about, you said that you're gonna, you're gonna reduce the number of hours you're operating in the parking lots. How do you plan to do that, realistically?
And make sure people get out after.
Yeah, yeah. The challenge is gonna be that, and we've seen this happen before, you've set a time, and then people will, just won't abide by it, next thing you know, they're all backing up on Route 1, trying to get into the parking lots.
Yeah.
So that's, I mean, it's a communication, communication issue, I know, but-
Yep.
But I think that's a legitimate concern that I see.
Yep. That, that, that's fair. Our, our plan on that is, is communication. And part of our strategy is gonna say, we're in this together.
Okay.
That if, if we, if, if everyone, like, look, if, if you approve this, and, and we don't do a good job, and our fans don't do a good job on September 13th, yeah, I'll be back in front of you, you're gonna say, no, we're done. And the state will say, you're done. And we're hoping that our communication get, really wraps, wraps people's heads around it. And, and we're, and right now, we're thinking two and a half hours.
Okay.
So that's, you know, cuz we don't, we wanna shorten the window, but we also don't wanna, we don't wanna make it so short that, that we have a backup out there trying to get people in at the last minute.
I mean, the, the good thing about that is that you're not gonna have as many people, period, so it's not likely it's gonna be as, as backed up as the, as the, some of the biggest, bigger performances.
And it's gonna be season ticket holders again-
Yes.
Who are used to doing this, you know, year after year, after, I'm sure you guys have it, Tom, Pat.
Yeah, they're big tailgaters though. I will say, just from personal experience, I feel like sometimes on the concerts, and I know I talked to you about this before, but like when we wait to communicate too late, remember how like we were waiting, like I think it was Chesney or something, that we didn't give the parking lot time till like two or three days before? The chatter that starts about that, the rumors that start, you know, my suggestion, based on personal experience at the concerts, is the sooner we can communicate it and not hold it, the better.
Yes. We, but, we want to communicate as early as we can. And one of the things, and we're not asking for a date to, for, we're not asking for a set date for, for you to approve this, but we believe that the right window of time would be three weeks, from approval to first game. Because we feel that's enough time for us to communicate, to ticket it, to reinforce the message. And from an operational perspective, we're going 100 miles an hour now, like it's gonna be approved. You know, tomorrow, tomorrow, we're doing, we're doing a dry run on the concourse.
That's really our next meeting, if we don't approve it today, to have the three weeks before the 13th.
I think that's true.
Yeah. And, and we may have, we may have a Revolution game before then. And, and from a, and from a Revolution perspective, like this is a Gillette Stadium plan, but, you know, so it would apply to the Patriots and the Revolution, but the, you know, the kinda, the kinda, the, the early thinking is that, that from a Revolution perspective, well, first of all, you're not gonna have the same density as a Patriot game.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you're talking about one club, and you're probably talking to start just the lower bowl. So you're dealing with a smaller group, which I think is, would be good, because it would give us, you know, a test run before you get to the full one. The, and, and I'll briefly go through the rest of the slides, but, and then wide open for questions, I have as much time as you want. So, in the, in the Putnam Clubs, you know, you know, we, we open, we opened the Putnam Clubs with over 3,000 people in the club. You know, we're currently at over 2,800 people per club. In our, in our, in our new model, we are talking about having in each club 684 people sitting in the outdoor seats. That's your 20%. And then indoors, we have created tons of queuing spates and tons of buffer zones, and then any, any, anyone who's inside the club either needs to, be actively going to get food and beverage, actively go into the bathroom, or sitting down at one of our tables. And the tables are socially distant, in compliance with mass, mass restaurant regulations. And by only having 600, we could actually seat two-thirds of them indoors, which is more, a bigger percentage. You know, but, but ultimately, everyone, if they're not moving somewhere, whether they're in the bowl or they're in the club, if they're not moving somewhere, they need to be seated. So there's no, there's no congregating, there's no congregating in the clubs, there's no staying in a bar. So it really changes the dynamic of spaces like, like DraftKings and the local, which we opened last year, they're just gonna operate, they have to operate differently in will. This year, we've, we've closed, we've, we are Optum Lounge members, we've, we've told that membership, because we can't, we don't, we just don't have the capacity in Optum Lounge to handle it. So Optum Lounge, if we, if we use it, would have a limited capacity of 113 people, in which we would control the count in and out. And Cross Pavilion would be at approximately 184 people. And that's, that's licensed for 1,000. So it just shows you how small we're shrinking things. Sweets?
Jim, question, all those counts that you just gave, those are all in the 14,000?
Yes, all included.
All right.
Yep. So the 14,000 number is someone who has a ticket to get in the building-
Yeah.
And some people will have a second ticket to get into a different location.
Sure, with, go ahead.
Yeah, no.
The, with Optum, are they gonna be able to access the field area, or they will not be able to go outside?
Correct. They will not be able to go outside, the outside is closed. So it really is an amenity area that, you know, for someone to come down and, you know, get food and beverage, but you can't really, you can't watch the game from there. You know, you'd be standing behind glass, and again, in that location, if you're not actively eating or drinking, you're sitting. You know, so the counts in Cross and Optum are based on how many seats we have. So we can't, we will be able to seat indoors at a table like this, four tops, everyone in those clubs. But if you're sitting in Optum, you can watch the game on TV, but you can't see what's going on. Sweets, similar concept. The suites, the, the size has shrunk to about a third of what we're used to having, and the, the seats are about, the, the seats are set up similarly, where the seats have to be, the seats you're sitting at have to be six feet away from another group of seats. So the first row is available, the second row's closed, and then the, the bar stools are available to keep the social distance in pods. And the good thing about the suites, the suites are open-air windows, we keep the windows open, so the front row of people are literally between zero and two feet from the open air, and the people on the bar stools are eight feet from the open air. So again, anyone sitting watching the game is open-air. And then lastly, from a egress perspective, we think this is really important, too, even with the small numbers. We're doing what we call a church-style egress. And what that means is whoever's closest to the concourse goes first, whoever's furthest to the concourse goes last. So we're gonna, we're gonna communicate it with messaging on our video boards and our PA, but more importantly, you know, we're gonna have, we're gonna have our ushers, you know, with, you've seen them at concerts where we have the paddle signs, you know, we're gonna have the ushers walk down the aisle and release the aisles row by row. You know, so, in the, in the 100 level, they're gonna release Row 36, they're gonna walk down two more, they're gonna release Row 34, two more, release 32, so that we can keep the six-foot distancing on the egress. And then they get to the concourse, it gets wider and gets wider. Because we don't want, again, we do not want, we don't want congregating. So that is my quick presentation, but I think I've covered all the baseline tenants. But I'm opening it up to you guys for any questions you may have.
Quick question, when do you go in front of the state to make this presentation?
So, I, I provided the presentation last Monday to Bill. I presented to the state on Wednesday morning, and I, I don't have direction from the state yet, but they've gone through the same presentation that you just went through. And, you know, so that, so that's where we are in the process.
I, I have a couple of questions, I just held them, so I'm sure you have the answer, so quick and easy, but talk to me a little bit, what's the wellness check look like for guests, and then are you doing any kind of wellness check for your employees? Cuz God forbid, one of them comes in contact.
Okay.
That's a lot of people they're in touch with. Second question, how does Governor Baker's travel advisory, with teams coming in, media coming in, different people coming in, impact? And then the third question, you know, everyone that's a Foxborough season ticket holder wants to know, I'm sure, if there's still gonna be parking on the Route 1 side.
So, I'll answer, I'll answer the easiest one first. No, you know, Foxborough residents who have the, the resident parking will park on the stadium side.
Okay.
And they'll park in, in the same location that they park in. So there's no changes to that.
Be a small group, I'm sure.
It's a small, it's a small group, but there's no change to that group. Second of all, the, with respect to the visiting teams coming in and, and the, and the state measures, Governor Baker's executive order on July 2nd authorized us to host games in the Commonwealth, as long as we follow NFL rules. Okay? So if we're following the NFL rules and protocols, which are about 600 pages, they say that we can conduct it.
Okay.
So if we take fans out of it, we, the state has approved our game day protocols, so that we're allowed to conduct games without fans. So, and the NFL has very, very strict provisions on hotel use and cleaning and bus movements, and what we need to do, and planes, and every step of the way. Because as you can imagine, they're, they have more concern than anyone about getting players to and from games safely. So we believe that's covered, and I, and your first question-
And then the wellness check, what, what does that look like at the gate? And then what does that look like for your employees, too, cuz they're in contact with so many people?
Okay. So, the employee ones, the employee one is, is easiest. The, first of all, we know every employee subcontractor coming to the building, we log them every game. We know them, they have to, they have to be registered before they get here. But every, every employee subcontractor, every non-fan who comes in the building will complete the Gillette Stadium Wellness app, which, you have to positively answer all the COVID questions like I did outside. You need to do it electronically, and it shows with a green bar, your name and the date. So it's not like you did it the day before. And every employee is gonna have their temperature checked.
Okay.
The, from a fan perspective, there's, we haven't finalized it, but it is, it is one of two things. It is, it is a pre-event notification and signage at the gates, like we did here, that read this, where you have someone physically saying, read this sign, do you agree you're well? Cuz, cuz one of the, you know, one of the, anyone's concern with a self-wellness certification is you can lie. And if someone has a fever, they can take Fort Tylenol and pass that test. So you are placing some level of reliance. So, one method is that, the other method is we make everyone download the Gillette Stadium app and actually click through the buttons to show us that they're well. So it would be one of those two. And that, and so, and that's, that would be the process for fans.
What?
Great questions. Anybody else? Chris?
So with Major League Baseball right now, there's no fans anywhere. So is NFL going to allow Patriots to have fans, but the, if the Jets decide not to? So is it NFL-wide that they're trying to get fans in every stadium?
Uh, yes. So what the, what the NFL has done, and I do think this is interesting, because you could have a competitive balance difference between markets, but the NFL says, so simply, the NFL says, if you need to follow CDC guidelines, and you need state and local approval, and if you get that, you can host games with fans. And if New York can't have fans and New England can, the NFL is okay with that.
And New York, well, let's, New York's not a good example, but like, let's say, like Philly or something, people can't really buy tickets, cuz there's none, none on the open market to come visit a game if their stadium's closed, essentially.
Ah. So, yeah, yeah, so, I mean, to come here?
Yeah, like, just thinking about Governor Baker's order as early as the fans even, it sounds like there wouldn't be an opportunity for them to even purchase tickets.
Yeah, because the, the fans who come would be subject to Governor Baker's quarantine order. But, but the, but the big question is, yes, you, you could have fans in one market and not in another market.
I think a couple of stadiums have already said no fans.
Right, so couldn't you see those fans trying to come, or I don't know?
Yeah.
Yeah, the three who said no fans this year are, oh, two stadiums have said no fans, one is Las Vegas.
Yeah.
The second is, which is interesting, is New York. So, and, and the Jets and the Giants have said no fans this year. And then Miami has said, no fans until October. But those are the only three markets that currently have no fans.
I think it comes around to the fact that only season ticket holders-
Right.
-will be getting tickets, so there's no open market.
Like Miami fans couldn't be coming up for the Patriots game here, you know, so, okay.
Like, we all like to go down there.
Right, exactly.
In normal times.
Yeah.
So when, when we say the word open market, so, so season ticket holders have an opportunity to put their tickets up on the Ticketmaster site, so if they don't, if for some reason, my gut is, if you're going to a limited amount of games, and you've gone ahead and paid for your season tickets, unless there's a real reason why you can't go last minute, you're going to go to the game that you've been assigned. So, it'll, so when we use the word open market, well, is there a chance that a ticket goes on Ticketmaster and somebody from Philadelphia says, hey, I went on Ticketmaster, and so, and they somehow, they, they sneak in, there's almost, there's almost some things-
Cuz the value's gonna be there. Like, a season ticket holder will be, oh, I could get $10,000 for my ticket, you know?
Exactly. Realistically, there's always gonna be a little snag, too. And first of all, let me tell you, this is quite impressive. I've been sitting in the old stadium and the new stadium since I was 12 years old, a very, very long time, and been to, I couldn't even say how many games. So, as you're talking, but in my head, I'm envisioning each step, and it's quite impressive to, to pull this off. So I commend you guys, cuz you guys have seemed like you're, you know, you're, you're doing the very best you can to get this, get this season underway. I also, more of a comment, I feel like the governor has been so strict, and Massachusetts is a state that we have flattened out, that you're, the biggest person that's, that you're gonna have to convince is him. Cuz if he says no, then it doesn't really matter what we say. So, I, I feel like, once you get that okay for seeing something else, I myself feel very comfortable of what we put out, cuz I think if the governor squashes it, then we know there's, there's something that isn't gonna work. So I wanna commend you, because, like I said, listening to each step of it, I'm envisioning in my head, like where I've walked, what we do, and, and the only other comment, I would say, as a season ticket holder, they're all afraid to lose their tickets. So I think that communication that you said, upfront, saying, hey, if you don't comply, you're gonna lose your tickets. And I, and I think you hit the nail on the head, as far as the people who are gonna be at the games, that communication, and maybe nicely threatening that your tickets will not be yours again if you, because if you, if they don't comply, they're gonna ruin it for everybody, you know?
Without a doubt. Without a doubt. And we, so we do think that the majority of season ticket holders are gonna use their seats, because it, then, it's, it's a very unique scenario, and they're not gonna, it's not, they're not gonna have, they're not gonna get what they ordinarily get. That's number one.
Yeah.
And I like, and, and people are like, well, how are you gonna police masks? And I say, the same way we police people smoking cigarettes, right? It's, you see it, you approach it, you correct it. If they don't correct it, they're gone. And, you know, and we have, you know, and we have specific escalations, and, you know, it starts with any of our security people, and then if they have an issue with the person, And then if they have an issue with the person, they elevate it to what we call a mobile team or a Rome team. And if they have an issue, that team is backed up by Foxborough PD. So, it's, nothing we're doing here, while all of it's new, we've done it all before. And people will say, "Well, how can you communicate all this messaging around a new plan?" We did it seven years ago when we went clear back, you know? And people got the message. And I think what makes this one even differently is that people are behaving differently in their own lives. So when we tell them this is different, it's no different than going to the grocery store. You know, it's, going to a grocery store is different. And, you know, and our belief in our plan, when you go back to the basics, we are outdoors. We are socially distant, we are wearing a mask. That is about the safest, and we're 1.8 million square feet. That's about as safe as you can get. Like, I would feel more comfortable with my family coming here than going to a restaurant, because of the environment. You know, if I was telling you, "We should have 52,000 people here and we've knocked 20% off," you know, you'd look at me like I'm crazy. And I, by the way, for our season ticket holders, I hate arguing, not arguing, but pitching a plan that it's 20%. You know, but when you look at the CDC guidelines, you follow all the regulations, this is where we end up. You know, so the science has dictated what the CDC has to do, and that has dictated our plan. And we've been validating the plan, you know, and specifically, the two key people in this are the infectious disease docs. The, and this is kind of like, I think, an interesting fact, like, the New England Patriots have an infectious disease doc from Mass General that works specifically with that team. The NFL has one, MLS has one, the Revolution have one. You know, we said, two months ago, we don't want to have to go to the one who's spending time working on the Patriots or the Revolution. We need our own. So we have a wonderful relationship with the Brigham, which we've had for years in the stadium. So we went to them and said, "Can you help us with an asset?" And then we had a relationship with the National Foundation for Infectious Disease. So we have two amazing people who are expert on, and we've talked to them about everything, from bathrooms to, you know, to things we haven't talked about tonight, like, you know, how do you do your broadcast booths in the red level and all these, all these things that we've addressed as well, but it doesn't involve fans? Because we want to do the right thing. We don't want people to come to Gillette and be at risk. But we do recognize anytime someone walks out their door, there's risk. You know, whether it's driving your car, you know, or going to a restaurant right now at Patriot Place, there's some level of risk. But our layered strategy, we believe, has mitigated that risk. So it is, we believe it is safer than many businesses that have reopened in the Commonwealth already.
Jim?
Yeah?
So Jim, there's no playbook on these kind of things now. It's a brand-new world that we live in. But does the NFL give you some sort of a general guideline for developing these plans? Or is this something you completely developed on your own?
I would say it's 80% us. What the NFL did is they gave some baseline guidance. I would call them do's and don'ts. You know, they gave guidance around ticket pods, and they said, "CDC says this." And then they had some specific things, like no buffets, you know, which we would have said no buffets either.
Yeah.
You know, we said no buffets, no coffee bars, none of that. But since every stadium is different, you know, if I worked for, for example, if I worked at Fenway Park, I would have a different strategy around how I'm getting people into the building. You know, I would have a time strategy that says, you know, some people have to come in an hour before the game, some people have to come in 45 minutes, because I can't, they don't have 2.7 miles of people walking up in gates that I can spread as wide as I want. You know, so each venue has to come up with their own strategy. So the NFL gave some guidelines and said, have at it.
Well, the purpose of my question is, I want to echo what Stephanie said. I think it was a really, really well-thought-out plan and design. You covered just about everything I could think of. And we've been working with COVID since March, and, you know, you thought a lot of things that we didn't even think of. I can tell you, it's really, really well-done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Do we want to approve it? Do you want to wait two weeks, bring it up again in two weeks?
Do you need it? I saw August 15 for Revolution. Can it wait? Or is that, there was no meeting before then?
You know, well, no, August 15 isn't, the first Revolution game is August 21st.
Okay.
We believe, not confirmed, because they haven't officially announced the schedule. You know, I think you said something earlier that we need state approval? If you, I mean, you know, maybe I, you know, if you could approve this, subject to state approval, that might be a way to do it?
That's exactly what I-
That's what I was thinking too.
My thought.
No, no, 100%. 100%.
I agree with that. Do, uh-
I'd be honored to make that motion. I won't be attending, but I'd be honored to make the motion. Okay, let's see.
Before you do that, can I ask another one question? So internally, you saw this last week, you got it, has the Board of Health seen it? You mentioned you were working with Police and Fire. Are they all conceptually fine with this?
Police and Fire, I know, are 100% behind this plan, there's no issue with that. I didn't, wasn't sure about public health. Have you spoken to public health about this?
I myself have not. I mean, I could check with David Will if he's talked about food safety.
That's the only question I have.
Yeah. But A, we're happy to meet absolutely with Board of Health, and we're also happy to make, to any recommendations that they have, we would incorporate into the plan.
Given the circumstance, you may want to do that.
Absolutely.
And make it subject to-
Subject to Board of Health.
Yeah.
You can consent to the Board of Health.
Yeah, I'd just like them to formally, I think, bless it, like Police and Fire.
Because they sometimes will have thoughts about things that-
Right.
Yeah, we didn't think about here, too.
Okay, so do we want to, at the tail end, subject to approval by Board of Health and state regulations?
And the state.
I think state approval and Board of Health by now.
Right.
Okay. All right. Let's give it a go. Okay. Motion to approve the fans in the New England, wait, one more time. Motion to approve the fans in the new normal reopening protocols for Gillette Stadium for the NFL and MLS 2020 season, subject to approval by state guidelines and Foxborough Board of Health?
Second.
Yeah. All right. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great. It was a wonderful plan when I saw it last week also.
Thank you very much.
Well, put together.
I love all the visuals, it makes it easy to, you know.
It's helpful, right?
Yeah, it's really helpful. The presentation style is really helpful.
Great job.
If, one of the things we didn't have here was the presentation on a board. Is there any way, if anybody from the town wanted to see the slideshow that we got?
Yeah, residents already asked me for it, and I didn't know if it was-
Could we?
Well, it's public document now.
No.
Technically, so.
Yeah.
Is it placed maybe on the Gillette website, or maybe can we put it on Foxborough website?
We can put it on our own website, if that's all right with you.
If that's okay with you guys?
Personally, I'd rather, if someone wants to see it, I'd rather have them see it directly so that it doesn't, it's not out in the ether, so to speak.
I totally agree.
That's fine.
Okay.
So if anybody wants to see it, we'll just redirect it to you. You're saying it to us.
Bill mentioned, though, it was emailed to the board, so it's a public document now.
No, I recognize-
It was talked about tonight, too, so either way, yeah.
Well, maybe we could somehow throw it out, so you're not going over the whole presentation, you know, 70 times. Maybe could we possibly make a date and a time and just throw it out there, maybe on the website, if anybody was interested, maybe-
We have this televised, this meeting's televised anyway, so we have this-
And I think it will become a living, breathing document, so I think it should be hosted probably like on Gillette's site, just because, you know.
But just bear in mind that if anybody wants it, we'd be required to give it to them.
Yeah, someone already asked me for it.
All right, great. Thank you very much, guys, for attending.
I have one more thing. I noticed in an earlier story that The Globe put out, the Kraft Group is applying for World Cup?
Yes.
For 20, I know it's farther out.
2026.
2026. However, you know, we've had a lot of experience in our community hosting one men's World Cup, two women's World Cups. And I'd like to think that the board would be very enthusiastic about also supporting that effort on the part of the stadium, because of the great success we had, having it as a venue, both at the old stadium as well as, you know, the new Gillette Stadium. You know, so I'm just throwing that out there, so perhaps we can think about it for the future. Not necessarily my future.
Hopefully, it makes sense.
But anybody still here, yeah.
I'll get you tickets.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys.
Have a great night.
Town meeting procedure review? Bill?
Yes, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the document, and goodnight, Jim. So the document that I've circulated to the board was designed to be an internal working document. And the reason why I wanted the board to look at it was to see if there was anything that we think we've missed along the way. But we have reviewed it with the town clerk and with the town moderator. I'm going to circulate it to all the town departments as well. But it doesn't require a board approval, it's just an internal working document. But what we've done is that, is more or less identified, everything that we have laid out there is actually identified in both the towns, the special act, as well as also the town's bylaws. And if you take a look at that document, there's nothing there. It also incorporates things that have been traditionally done in Foxborough, they're not necessarily written anywhere, but have been traditionally done. So it's clear that that's the process that we use here. And the reason I did that was because I don't want anybody to be, you know, someday, if, you know, when I'm not here or somebody else is not here, we want to be able to be able to say, "This is how we do it here in Foxborough. And we put this document together this way, and this is how the process works." So, and the reason I wanted to do that this year particularly is because we have a lot of new staff. And I think, and it contributed to part of the problem that we had this past year, was because a lot of new people were involved in the process. So this document was put together with that in mind, based upon what we know and how we practice things. And then obviously, I wanted to have the input of both the town clerk and the moderator to make sure that we haven't missed anything along the way. They actually gave me a couple of suggestions, which I've incorporated into it during the conversation that we had right here in this room, actually, a few weeks ago. So, it's just a guideline. It's, I'm hoping that if anybody sees anything, make sure you let me know, and we'll be happy to incorporate it into it. But it's just, it's a working document for, a procedural document more or less for us.
Any questions?
I still think it's missing that, like, RACI chart component, so who's responsible, who's accountable, who's consulted?
I actually, I actually did do that, but I didn't incorporate it into that document. I used it as the basis for-
This is kind of like anecdotal, but if I was the new executive assistant, I would want to know, what's my steps? What's my timing? What's, you know, the chronological order that everything has to happen? So, I think it just needs that, like, checklist component, just because, like, we know it has to be posted, but you know, there's deadlines with the paper, or, you know, posted where, posted how, or, you know, kind of those pieces.
So it could be done as an addendum.
Yeah, like, literally that, if you, like, Google what a RACI chart or a RACI matrix is, you'll see it has the deliverable, all the tasks, and then it's got the names across the top, and literally like a box for who, everyone kind of who does what, just so that there's no, because I think we all kind of knew how it happened, but there was some uncertainty about who did what and the timing of things, so just getting down a level deeper.
So I think, I actually used that, I used the RACI, I guess you could put one together for this, and I actually used it to develop this document. So what you're suggesting, though, is actually, it's a good thought. I mean, I can actually do that at the very end as more or less a checklist.
Like an appendix.
An appendix. That would actually give somebody a visual to, you know, these are the things, these are the timelines. And actually, it'll be actually helpful for the next manager, too, for that matter, to see, you know, what's the timelines we typically follow here for putting together a warrant, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, because we know how important it is. If you miss the date on a step, it can, you know, kind of mess up everything after that, so.
Okay.
And also then, whether it's while you're still here, Bill, or the next town manager, you know, then you can kind of look down and say, "Okay, so we're supposed to post by this date. Okay, it's Leah's job, so you, then whoever it is can look and say, 'Hey, Leah, did you post?'"
I'm accountable, but I had to inform you and consult you.
That's right.
And just the order, you know, even like Section 5, it says who reviews it, but like, what's the order? Who looks at it first? Who looks at it, you know?
And also, I think I might have already asked this when we talked about it last time. So, right now, it would have been Frank and Bob, because they're the people who hold the clerk and the moderator's position. So they went through this with you, too, and so everybody, you know, kind of collaboration of everybody knows this is, you know, this is exactly what needs to be done. And so everybody else has looked at it and feels like we have a good document here.
Yeah, well, the answer, the short answer is yes. But I think it goes more than deeper than that, is the fact we really took a lot of time to delve into the bylaws and into all the different practices that we do here to make sure that it was consistent. And so far, I haven't heard anybody say anything that's said to the contrary. There were a couple of thoughts to say, "Maybe we should expound upon this a little bit more, maybe we should do that, we should just, you know, put a simple RACI chart in the bag that identifies who's responsible for what."
Yeah, what you have to remember, this is our document.
Right.
We got input from the town moderator, and we got input from the town clerk.
Right.
But this is for us.
That's the eye on the RACI chart. Like, literally, you know, because there's so many cooks in the kitchen and there's so many things going on.
So this is us.
Yeah.
This is us, this is Bill.
Yep.
And we got input, just like you gave some great input now.
Yeah.
This is it.
And then even debrief, like, the last step could be debrief after each one, and is there lessons learned, or things we need to change, or-
Well, the lesson learned from the last one was that we didn't have this document.
And now I think we've documented a lot of that stuff that's undocumented, like the how we do things in the town. Now it's like, okay, how does it get done?
Right.
Yeah.
Tradition. All right, yeah, good. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Assistant town managers report, we're going to certainly skip. Bill, town managers?
So I thought it would take this time. Right now, I'm working on some of the goals and objectives that the board had laid out for me a few weeks ago. It's actually, when you break it all down, it's about, it's about almost three pages long. There are, but some of the things are like ongoing things that we just do on a regular basis anyways. But I thought I would just kind of give you, once a month, an update of where we are with things, so that this doesn't get lost in the shuffle like it can be in so many different ways. So I made a point to ask Christine to put this on the agenda for once a month, update on where we are with, you know, with the goals and objectives. That way, it stays constant, it stays consistent, and it doesn't get lost in the shuffle like things can. So, just some of the highlights of the first, first one was to protect and enhance the financial health of the town. Ongoing review of the budget available for expenditures on July 15. Our new budget was available to everyone. Year-end reviewed, year-end revenue deadline was for July 14. Just, we did receive a $1 million grant for expenditures from the federal government on June 15 to be used for COVID-19-related expenditures. We discussed during the July 2020 department head and provided department heads with some clear direction on things that they can do to help this process, so they're aware of it. They got the same document I'm reading right now. One of the, probably one of the biggest things to notify the board is that we received word and confirmed this morning by, from the state representative, that Foxborough, that the state has indicated that we will be getting a level state aid this year compared to, which we anticipated, about a 15% cut. So that's actually right out of the gate, is about $1 million more that we should have available for us for this current budget year. So in case we run short in, say, some of the other revenue areas, we'll be able to make, we've got some room to make up some things along the way. So that's, so that's good news. That's, right now, we're a little bit ahead of the game. What's, and we still don't know what the federal government's going to provide for us. My guess is that it'll be, fall somewhere between what the Senate was looking for and what the, what the House is looking for, and that will end up with some level of state aid in addition to that, that we'll be able to use towards offsetting the budget for this upcoming year as well. And then the question's going to be, when do we get back to, you know, what we were prior to COVID-19? You know, listening to the pundits on the various stations, they, some say, you know, 20, end of 2021, early 2022, mid 2022, really depends upon how well we can get through the, the COVID-19 disease and see how well we can actually eradicate it with the, with the different inoculations and ways to treat it. So that's really going to depend on that, and we'll have to wait and see how that plays The, we're also using new budget software this year, which is compared to, you're going to actually like this document, because this is going to be, it's, we're using a process called ClearGov, which will actually, which will be, stuff we can actually be able to put right on our website, that people can actually look at and see and know and follow where we are. And we're trying to, we're developing that now as we speak. So that should be a really good process for all of us. Protecting, enhancing the communication engagement is the, is the, is the piece that we're working on now as well, and they maintain, and that is to developing an actual strategy for communication that we're working on with, Mike was working on it before that, but he's still going to be able to participate to a degree. But certainly Christina and I are going to work on that probably a lot more closely during the next few weeks. And then so, and that's really one of the major pieces of that discussion. Also, to create a plan for department heads to meet with the board of selectmen no less than annually to discuss relevant issues and anticipated strategy and strategic actions involving their departments. Starting, starting with your next meeting, we're going to start scheduling department heads in here. So we're going to start, because there are so many different operations, it's going to take a while to get through that. So I want to make sure that we have enough time to get through that, and we don't run into budget season and all the times when it gets difficult to get people in here. Appoint board liaisons to, so we want to talk about how we can do that, appoint some board liaisons and how we, how we work through that. So I'll, I'll work with the chairman first as a draft, and we'll lay it out for all you to see how we want to do that, what's the best way to address that.
And we have a draft already that Christina and I put together.
Okay, sorry, so that's good. So we can actually?
It's like seeing if you agree with it.
Yeah, okay, good. So then we'll, we'll work on that, and then we'll get that finalized. Make sure to have to communicate with schools, community clubs, organizations. I probably speak to the school department two to three times a week, as it is now. So that's, it's getting to the civic clubs and the organizations is a little more challenging, given the environment that we're in right now, so, because I'm not sure how much they're actually meeting. So that's, that's a little bit of a challenge, but certainly getting out to the community more.
JCs, though, we're talking to them, and, you know, they're definitely.
Yeah, I can certainly talk to them.
And you would go to the senior center?
I still do that on a, on a monthly basis. In fact, we're going to start this month with my, my monthly meeting with the seniors. That's, that's going to continue, actually restart at the end of this month, so. And each challenge, each department present one or more ways to positively enhance the customer service. I've got some that are already developing right now, so we'll, we'll be rolling those out to you as soon as we have them formalized. So those are, that's actually a really good, really good, good piece right there. The protect and enhance business and economic development. Increased dialogue with business owners and committees, and committees in effort to have more responsive and business-friendly community. Meeting with the uptime business group and, at the board of select meeting on July 20th. We already started that. And then also, we want to have more discussions with how we can actually get the business community involved in whether it's the Route 1 business, it's, it's the downtown business, it's the area, it's the, you know, Route 140 business group, I guess, is probably the best way to describe it. And see how they're doing, and then see how we can, we can keep, keep communicating in that area. Work on town businesses to improve their opportunity to successfully operate with the community focusing on special issues like parking, ease of access, encouraging high-traffic areas itself. Well, probably the one, the biggest improvements that we've made so far this year that's finalized now is the roundabout down at Route 1, at, on Foxborough Boulevard. That was, actually came out really, really well. It's working, it's functioning well. We've had no, we've had very few concerns expressed once it was finalized. It's actually worked out very well. And I'm meeting with the planning director to talk about ways we can, we can encourage the master plan process and work with them on that. We're already having those conversations. And collaborate with the MBTA, CSX, Moss Coastal, and the state and federal officials to help to develop comprehensive rail plans. I mean, we're actually working on getting the gates finalized now in the, in that work, deciding work, getting ready to start work on doing the actual crossings at Mechanic and Echo Cassett. So those, those, those projects are actually underway.
Can I ask you a question on rail?
Sure.
With this whole COVID thing that happened, what's going on with the pilot program?
It's, it's an interesting question, because right now, there's not a lot going on. So it's, I think it's probably going to be placed on hold for a little while.
It came up at the EDC meeting, and I guess ridership is around 4%, I think, is what Dan said, which is pretty on par with, you know, what we're seeing in the rest of the state. So at least the pilot seems to be like it's, you know, on par there. It's still running.
Yeah, so I wasn't sure if they were just going to?
Yeah, it's still running, but it's, we may, we may, it's going to be up to the state to determine if they think that's a good read on what it actually is.
Yeah.
Hopefully it is, because I think, you know, clearly, a lot of people are anxious to move forward with that in mind.
We didn't ask that question if they're going to, they probably won't have the train run on game day with all season tickets.
No. No, they already, it was in the presentation.
Okay.
Yeah. And then finally, to protect and enhance town operations, I'm currently working on a truck binder for the town manager's office, going through the, the actual roles and responsibilities as defined in the special act, and taking each one of those and actually defining each one of those things as to what's, what's being done, and how it's being, how it's being handled in our, in our departments. So that's actually been, been helpful. Developing standard operating procedures for key elements required at the town meetings. Already, already worked on that. I continue to provide leadership to ensure the town's successful transition toward regional dispatch. Took a tour of the, of the new facility just last week with all the, all the town managers from the four towns, and the, and the, and the progress is tremendous. I mean, at some point, we may want to take a little field trip up there, and if any one of you wants to go up?
Yes.
Let, let me know. It's, it's a great, it's a great thing to see right now. It's really, they still have a little bit of work to do yet, but I'll tell you, they're way ahead of schedule where they want to be. The only thing that's going to hold them right now is that the HVAC equipment that was supposed to go in in the next few weeks was ordered from Texas, and Texas actually canceled the order because, because of all the COVID-19 that they're experiencing now. So they actually canceled it. So they're, they're scrambling now to try and find how they can, how they can replace that, that order. So that's going to put them back a little bit. We'll see how much, we don't know exactly what the timing of that's going to be at this point. Continue to evaluate town operations, identify, I'm sorry, support the select device to grade and implement successful housing's production plan, that those, that work's still underway and working very, very well at this point. Continue to evaluate the town operations by identifying and correct, connecting, correcting areas that are structurally deficient and can be improved by applying appropriate corrections and technology as needed. That's an ongoing process, and as specific examples emerge, we're going to, we'll certainly bring those to your attention. But one of the things that we're able to do this year, at least to apply part of the budget process, the new, is the new, is the new ClearGov approach, which I think will be a real plus for everyone. Refresh the town policy manual. That's something that I've actually started working with Katie. I worked on that probably about two, three months ago. And then we got derailed because of all, all the different changes. But I want to get back into that, into finishing that and updating that, so we can give you, you know, a new draft of how that, that document should read. And then ensure that all new processes and strategic improvements that are within the relevant responsibility of the town manager are successfully implemented within the agreed-upon timeframes. You know, certainly, that's what we're doing right now. That's why I'm here, doing this right now. So set the example to lead with culture of transparency, quality customer service, consistent follow-up and follow-through, and that's, that's an ongoing process that we deal with every single day. And by and large, we're, you know, it's, we're making good progress on all fronts, but if anybody sees anything or wants, wants me to take up something in a different direction, just let me know. Happy to, happy to work on it with you. That's all I have.
Selectments updated, anybody have anything?
Just going back to that whole budget thing, you know, normally, we wouldn't talk about it much, but I feel like there's so much unknown, and, you know, maybe I'm a little bit of a worrywart. And I think, Bill, you can as probably one of the smartest guys and respected people I know, but I think there's going to be things that are out of their control, and following the school stuff, I'm worried what's going to happen. You know, that's, I'm just using that department as, as an example, but, you know, other departments, what? If, it would make me feel good if maybe, like, quarterly or monthly, we just got some kind of anecdotal executive summary, we're, we're doing well, this came up that we weren't expecting. We think this might be a problem, just, you know, some sort of update.
So it's, it's a great, it's a great point, and I, I think we want to do that on a regular basis, given the circumstances. So, so just following up on what I said earlier, we, we did get the, the indication from the state on, on the state revenues. We're still hearing on the federal revenues. I did check with, with, with Mike Kelleher on ambulance runs. And at this point, at this point in time last year, they were, they, they had done around 1,900 runs. As of today, they were 1,810, so they're just off a little bit in comparison. But the one thing he's noticing is that the runs are taking longer now because Norwood Hospital's closed. So the, the runs, so, so they do get more reimbursement for the length of the run and the mileage that they put on the vehicle as well. So it may work out that, that even though there may be fewer runs, the length of the run may actually help offset that as well. So he's, he's going to look at that more closely, but we looked at that as early as today.
But I agree with you. Let's, let's do quarterly.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be all the time.
George come in here, maybe right underneath, you know, phase reopening update, maybe a COVID State of the Union.
Yeah, no extra work, like, I, like, just whatever's ready can be anecdotal, but just like a finger on the pulse.
Yeah.
Just George come in, give us a five-minute presentation of where we're at.
There were, right now, there were, given the fact that we know where we are with the state aid thing, there are two things I'm keeping my eyes close on, and that is obviously local, local receipts. We want to make sure that that money comes in. The, you know, the quarterly revenue reports that we're getting from the state, we'll see where that is. And then also, new growth. I mean, because, right, we're, we're seeing some development going on, and right now, there's a pent-up demand for housing. The market is extremely tight around here. So I sense that there are, and I'm hearing there are a couple developers looking at projects right now that are looking to do, but the question is, they probably won't make the revenue forecast for next year, because they're just, they're just looking at them now. So I, I think our new growth number might be off a little bit this year. I'm not sure, we still might be able to make the, the number that, because we had such a low number to begin with, that we'll probably still make that. But even if we're off a little bit, I think the savings was in the state aid anyways to, to offset that. The world, the real question, the thing that I'd like to do, and I, and I said this before, so I want to just, I want to say it again, if at all possible to make a payment towards the OPEP account, I'd like to be able to do that. So it really will depend upon how much money we get in off the, you know, the state, the local receipts, the, the hotel motel tax and the meals tax. And let's see what we can do. I mean, I, even if it's not the full amount, if we can make some amount of payment towards that, it's certainly, it's certainly, you know, that much less that we have to pay back later on.
But that can be a late, last-minute decision.
I, I think you make that decision actually at the annual meeting next year.
Yeah.
But quarterly makes sense, because that's kind of when a lot of those revenues and numbers are updating. And I don't know how much we want to, you know, just like with the budget process this year, we, we worked together more with, you know, school committee and us, you know, even kind of getting a feeling for how things are going there, because they might need some of our help. I don't, I don't know, I'm just guessing it off of some of the.
So we, another thing that you should be aware of is that, you know, the, the chairman of the finance, the advisory committee, and the vice chairman, and I met with, and George met, talked last week, and so we're already starting the conversations. That's the earliest I've ever met with that committee since I've been here to talk, start talking about budgets. So we're just, they're, they're asking for the same information you are.
Yeah, it could be good to have AdCom, school committee, us, George.
So just to kind of give you a, you know, a thumbnail indication of where we are, and so, and to keep everybody in a position so that we're fully informed as we go forward. It just makes the process that much easier to understand as we go forward.
So here we are in, in August. You want George to come in, in a month, and?
I think it makes sense wherever the quarter lies, you know?
End of September, it'll probably be the end of September.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
End of September.
Yeah.
So that gives a little bit of an indication where we are.
And piggybacking on what Leah said about, not that we want to cause, make more work for anybody, but also, for us to look at it quarterly is great, but I remember a couple of times, an AdCom, when we were vetting budgets, you, you know, I would have a question, say, okay, well, we're, you know, we're halfway through the year, or we're year-to-date, and, you know, we're budgeting this, but we only, we've only used this. Why are we budgeting next year more? And some of the budgets are top and bottom-heavy.
Right, this season, this season.
Good example, I think, matter of fact, it was Mike Kelleher, before he was even chief, when he was presenting the budget, he said, well, he said, we tend to buy fire hoses in the spring. So that's near the end of the fiscal year.
Right.
So it, it might be a good idea, with all the uncertainty of what's going on with COVID, is, not to cause a lot of work on their part, but maybe that they, that George can maybe do a little check-in, especially with department heads, and saying, okay, right now, we seem like we're on track, but do you think we're really on track for next quarter and the quarter after, which you may not be able to determine yet? But they'll know their budget, where we might just look and say, okay, this quarter, we're here, but they know how to look ahead at their budget and just to make sure, because we don't really know when everything's going to bounce back. So it might be a good idea for them to look a little ahead for us, you know?
That's certainly, that's certainly a question we can ask the department heads, though, as they cycle through us.
As they commit, yeah, as they cycle through. You can ask that question, see, how are you really doing? What do you anticipate as the problems?
I think we just, I think we might be overthinking it, too. It's like, the budget is the budget, you know? Expenditures are always typically what they are. We just have to look at COVID-related.
Yeah.
Revenue shortfalls and expense increases.
Surprises.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that's right. I think, I think you, I mean, the day-to-day operational stuff is stuff that we handle. And with, and if there's real surprises, I'll let you know. I mean, it's, right now, I don't see any real surprises right now, but I think right off the bat, I can tell you that a lot of the training money that we have built into the budget this year, we're not going to be able to use a lot of it, because nobody's traveling anywhere, nobody's going anywhere. So it's, we're going to be able to, you know?
We're up to state aid already, so we're in good shape.
Everything's virtual, everything's virtual. You know, so we're, yeah, we're in a better position than I was. See, it moves, it changes almost daily and weekly now. So if, as soon as I know information, I just, okay, I check that off, and we move on to the next one, and see, what, what does it help us along the way? But the questions, your questions are fine. I mean, I have no, I'm happy to, the more we can put out there and the more we can give people comfort before they head into town meetings, the better off it is. I just, it's the, it's, we want to get good information to people. It's really important to do that.
One last thing on the selectments update, just want to update the rest of the board. Bill and I, Citizens Input, two weeks ago, we had Dave Coffey come in front of us, and read a pretty passionate couple of pages. read a pretty passionate couple of pages, um, so Bill and I met with him last Thursday, we had a great meeting. Uh, he understood some of, um, where we were coming from, uh, we understood some of where he was coming from, and then there was a whole bunch of in the middle where we agreed to disagree. Uh, but we had a great meeting, I think we, uh, came out of that, uh, you know, we can't shake hands anymore, but, uh, agreed that, uh.
We did give elbows, though.
We did, elbows, and he's a very interesting gentleman, his history's really rather phenomenal.
Yeah, he's got an interesting past, yeah.
I just wanted to update you, we didn't meet with him.
Happened to get a copy of his document that he read that night, did you?
We did, we did.
Yeah.
Uh, I think, Bill, did you get a, he, he handed it to us.
Yeah, I gave it to you, yeah.
I wonder if I have it in here.
Get a copy?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, we'll get you a copy, because he did give it to us.
You just put it in Board Docs and just, you know, log it there on that meeting.
Okay. Uh, other than that, um, let's go to action items.
Okay, motion to approve extended hours for Jake and Joe's for the following Saturdays. August 15th, September 9th, October 10th, and October 24th. Alcohol service to remain as an existing license.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just under discussion, like with congregating with the board of health, I know normally they wouldn't weigh in on this, but just curious if we even ask them, I mean, this is just basically people hanging around, not eating or drinking.
I believe what it is, is that the food service will, um.
Food service will continue, but not, not.
The food service will continue, the alcohol will.
It says we're not asking for an extension in food or liquor service.
I, but I think it's, um, so I'm, I'm just guessing, those, um, the fights.
No, I know, I know, we approve these all the time, but like, like, you know, their capacity's so low, it just kind of jumped out at me, and I'm surprised they're doing it, and I would think.
Well, food actually goes a little later anyways, so it doesn't, you know, the alcohol service ends at 12:30. Uh, I think the kitchen remains open a little bit beyond that, yeah, to 1:00.
12:30 or something.
Yeah, so, yeah.
But I'm sure that's still within the guidelines, though.
Yeah, as long as they're within the guidelines, you know.
Well, my, my, my gut instinct is that, I mean, so obviously, people pay to, to see the fight, and then so say the fight goes long, like they don't have an exact little time.
Right, and you just let the fight end, they clear out, we're done.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've not had any issues with any of these in the past.
Okay. All those in favor?
Motion to approve a $25 donation to the fire department for Mr. and Mrs. Charles Albert.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve the board of selectmen meeting minutes from June 3rd and June 4th.
We'll do them one at a time.
Okay. From June 3rd, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve the board of selectmen meeting minutes from June 4th, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Right.
Motion to approve the state primary election warrant.
You had June 9th on there too, did you?
No, we don't have them. We don't have them though, so it's just the.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, so, okay.
All those in favor?
Uh, under, under discussion.
Sorry.
Yeah, is this, I don't ever remember having to approve a state warrant, primary one, is this normal?
And is it posted somewhere, that was like, it kind of like.
Yeah, it gets, it gets posted, but they.
Where, here, at town hall?
Hall, and it's also.
Is it posted anywhere, like?
No, it doesn't get posted until you approve it.
Okay, okay. Someone asked me for this too.
I never remember ever approving one of these.
I think we, we, it was sent to us, they said, you know, we, we should, I said, recommend you just put it on there and just approve it, because it's just, it's a, typically, you would approve the warrants anyways.
Yeah.
For all elections.
Okay, that was just on my question, I mean, I've been here six years, and I, unless I'm forgetting everything, but I don't ever remember doing this. All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions regarding collective bargaining negotiations with the Steel Workers Union, Unit A and B, and not convene in open session.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just, I see that there's two documents in here now, when did those get uploaded?
Which two documents?
The two ones for executive session. Because I checked yesterday at 2:22, and there was nothing in there.
I don't recall when they were uploaded, but they, um.
When I was on here, they weren't on.
Yeah, so that's the thing, is just know, like, it's here now, and then it's like, bam, they're here, we're going to talk about them, but no one's seen them, so.
Yeah, it's pretty simple, though.
Okay, I haven't seen it, I haven't opened it, I just.
Yeah, it's pretty simple.
I've just kind of had no idea what it was about.
When we'll, you know, when we go in the other room, we'll discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
We gotta do roll.
You have to do a roll call.
A roll call.
You need a roll call, yeah.
Just say your name and yes.
No, no, so, so motion, the motion to go into executive session, and, and then roll call vote, okay?
We made the motion to go in.
Okay, so you just, and did anybody second it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we voted on it.
All right, so, Ed?
Ed O'Leary, yes.
Mark Elfman, yes.
Stephanie McGowan, yes.
Leah Gibson, yes.
Chris Mitchell, yes.
All right, now, good night, everybody.